It's now 6:00 P.M. Thank you to those who are in attendance in council chambers here at City Hall. To those of you joining us online, we're happy to have you with us. Tonight, the invocation will be given by John Lind and Councilman Fournette will leave us in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, I want to first thank you for letting us be born in a country that is free and we can elect representatives such as our council here to have a voice and a say in what we want them to do for us. And may that, may you bless them and touch their heart to, to vote in the way that would be your will. And I want to bless everyone in this building, Police Department, the Fire Department, and all city workers. Amen.
Amen.
To join me in prayer, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a brotherhood of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Ladies and gentlemen, you have before you tonight the agenda for tonight's meeting. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Next, we have the public comments section. We're pleased to provide an opportunity at each meeting for comments by citizens, limited to three minutes of speaking time per speaker and no more than a total of 30 minutes. The public comments section of the agenda is not a question and answer time. The mayor, council, and administration officials will take all comments under advisement and may respond or take other potential action at a later time. We have four Pascagoula resident citizens signed up to speak tonight. The first is Lisa Clark Cannon. Ms. Cannon?
Thank you. My name is Lisa Cannon. I reside in Forts Lake, which is north of the annexation area, but I am an interested party. This evening, I want to share some information that is on the social media called Facebook platform. So this is Ms. Ernie Dugan, her thoughts on social media, and I'm going to read what she wrote. "I live in the Franklin Creek community. I am 82 years old, and I have a question. What does Pascagoula offer me in my lifetime? Water? I have my own well. Road repairs? Roads are in good shape, and some have been paved recently. Sewage? Like everyone else out here, we have our own septic and disposal. Streetlights? Singing River Power supplies lights at a reasonable price and will replace if needed. Police protection? The sheriff handles that. Garbage pickup? They pick up mine every Thursday and sometimes on holidays, including recycle. We are mostly in flood zones, so tell me what you offer except a bill to pay that I am sure will be a hefty one. The only thing that would benefit would be school for our kids. You have already said no to that. We are doing okay, so handle your city and leave us alone. It will be decades before you finally get anything out here unless you plan on putting hotels and a truck stop at Exit 75. Is that the plan?" And then for myself, I will speak on kind of a devil's advocate, the good and the bad, about the annexation. So here, let's, let's talk a little bit and be clear. There is no growth pressure in the I-10 Franklin Creek Highway 90 area since that stretch of highway was opened in 1982. Forty-three years later, it remains undeveloped. Jackson County already has a comprehensive plan, and that covers this area and guides growth responsibility. There's no need for the city to duplicate or override it. Residents here value the rural character, the open space, low density, and natural beauty. No subdivisions have been developed in this proposed annexation area, none. Deer Creek is the last subdivision that was developed, and that's north of the annexation area. It lies outside, and of course, it is in Jackson County. It has done a great job, Jackson County has done a great job balancing growth with natural resources. Infrastructure, again, there is no pressure. Growth is happening in West Jackson County and in Hurley, not in Southeast Jackson County. The county already manages permit, zoning, and services. We have no need. The city's involvement would only add cost, complexity, and confusion. More zoning means more rules, fees, and restrictions, burdensome for families and farmers who cherish flexibility. Enforcement is going to require more staff and budget, which the city may not have or even intend to provide. This feels more like a tax grab than a genuine service expansion. The bottom line, Southeast Jackson County is rural, stable, and well-managed. Residents want to preserve that. If you truly care about this community, engage us, audit what's already working, and focus only where change is really happening. Perfect timing.
Next is Ms. Annette Stringfellow.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Annette Stringfellow. I live at 13137 Forts Lake Road in Moss Point. I have a vested interest in the outcome of the proposed annexation. I'm concerned taxpayer and county residents. I'm opposed to the city's push for annexation. The proposed annexation area already has services provided by the county or are independent for those services of their own. With the requirement of certified annexation, the city will be required to implement certain services within a short period of time. These services include police officers, firemen, planning zoning employees, code enforcement office, equipment facilities, and others. The annexation and the implementation of services to a new unincorporated area could possibly cause a dilution of resources to your current citizens with a probable hit to the taxpayers' cost and the city's financial budget. The services mentioned are not limited, as I am sure there are others, but they are currently adequate to the citizens of the proposed annexation area. The services the city is not willing to provide is educational services to the children and the families in the proposed annexation area. This is something I don't understand. If you want new residents, they should have the same opportunities as current residents. With the lack of redistricting of schools, it seems this leads to the burden of splitting the tax responsibility into Payne County, school tax to Moss Point, and being taxed for living in the city limits of Pascagoula. I believe the annexation is not reasonable. It does not serve the public convenience and necessity of the residents of the proposed area. County residents like myself and to your own current residents and citizens, simply stated, we are self-sufficient with county services in many aspects. Concentrate on your citizens. Concentrate on your city along with your resources. Strengthen them from within and not take on one and a half times the amount of area that the city currently has in its boundaries. By that, I mean the square footage that we've talked about and that is published. And with that, and with that area not being developed with infrastructure, the cost could be astronomical to your citizens. I'm opposed to the annexation for many other reasons that I do not have time to share, such as your failing infrastructure in your own city and the required services the city would be set to implement if the annexation is approved in the new area. I ask all of you, all of you, and the citizens of Pascagoula to encourage you to set aside the move for annexation, dismiss the court proceedings, and concentrate on improving and providing for its current citizens in the city's current boundaries. Thank you for your time.
Speaking next is Mr. Thaddeus Barnes, Senior. Mr. Barnes?
What I come about tonight and what I would ask the board to do for me, if they would, please. These are grass cutters. I'd like to see that because I used to be one, but I don't want to see them blowing the grass down the drain because I caught problems out there trying to get, I live in Briarwood Estate. I had a problem getting help out there to get the water. We'll run off and quit flooding me out. And I hate to see them blowing the grass. Get them a bag. Sweep it up, pick it up. The bags don't cost that much. I appreciate if y'all will help me with that.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes.
Yes, sir.
Next is Cameron Haynes. Cameron?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Good evening. I would love to address Old Mobile Highway. Old Mobile Highway needs new lines. It hasn't been no lines on Old Mobile since 2014 and '15, since that hurricane in Laurel. And I know that happened in 2013, and I might be off on the ears. And then, this is like from Sherwood all the way to King James Drive, and it's a whole, it's a ditch, it's like a ditch, like when you drive on the right side going close to the traffic light towards where Chevron goes in and out. It's a ditch right there, and it needs to be dug up some way because nobody wants to go on the left lane of that road and end up in a car accident. And then, also, who is it? 11th Street going close to Bozo's, it needs, it needs some yellow lines, too. It's about to be invisible, and you don't know what conditions some people are under. And then, Beach Boulevard close to the Sing River Yacht Club, it needs some lines, too. And then, Andrew Avenue and Telephone Row, the bottom where the people turn right going close to Moss Point, it's, it's like rocks down there. It's like if it gets any fuddered or a big truck hits there, it's going to break, and it needs some sort of cement seal right there. And then Telephone Row needs paved, not paving, it needs lines because it's, the paint is going to fade off on the road. And then, as far as the annexation, I disapprove of it. And not because she, she came up here first. It's because if it's going to increase utilities and everything else, isn't, man, that's, we got, got to keep our heads right here in the sand. And I don't know if there's anything else. I'm just leaving it at that. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Certainly. Next, we have a consent agenda. Does any member of the council have any questions about items on the consent agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The motion passes. Next, we have the docket of claims A. Are there any questions regarding the docket of claims A? Do we have a motion to approve the docket of claims A?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Next is the docket of claims B. Are there any questions regarding the docket of claims B? Do we have a motion to approve the docket of claims B?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Next, we have docket of claim C. Are there any questions regarding the docket of claim C? Do we have a motion to approve the docket of claim C?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Next is the payroll docket. Are there any questions regarding the payroll docket? Do we have a motion to approve the payroll docket?
So moved.
So moved.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Next, we have mayor council items. Are there any mayor council items at this time? Councilwoman Brandenstein, you have anything?
Sure. I just wanted to comment. I know there were a lot of activities that went on last weekend. Appreciate all the residents who came out and helped with the coastal cleanup, and then also the big barbecue event. Had a really great turnout, thanks to the Pascagoula Men's Club for coordinating that for the last number of years. Seems to get bigger each year, and I know, I think Darcy will probably comment on an event that she was involved with. So appreciate everyone coming out and supporting the city.
Councilwoman Stallworth?
Yeah, I'd like to pray for the homecoming this week, that it be safe and well-done.
Definitely.
All this stuff is going on in these cities nowadays. Me, I, I really didn't want to even think about that homecoming because there's too much stuff going on right now. You know, we, we all want to see people that we went to school with back in the days, but nowadays, it's, it's not a good thing to get into this big fellowship.
We're living in crazy times.
Perilous times. That's what the word says, perilous times. So that's the time we're living in.
Do, do we want to comment on, obviously, Justin and the councils talked with Chief Scott. Do you want to just?
For the fair.
Well, more so, well, I guess that maybe, and the homecoming, kind of all in one.
Yes, it's, it's going to be well-managed. It's going to be on route to people. We have one way in, one way out. Control the traffic that way. We'll have plenty of officers there to work it. People put together, agreed to the amount of officers that are happy with it. We're actually providing extra lighting for them, and we will have an extra staff working at night along, because the fair is here.
Right.
Okay? So I want to point to one of the groups.
Yeah, no, we, but I just want to make sure to reiterate, we appreciate, I know there are a lot of things that continue to pop up, but you and your department are always ensuring and thinking about how we can best serve our citizens, so just appreciate all the work that, that you and your team do.
We tried to put something out on the social media about the fair after it got to the fourth, fifth person, it turned out it was against the fair and it wasn't. And, and we had that threat taken care of. We just can't say what at this time.
Right.
The best investigation of, but that threat won't happen. Anything could happen anywhere, but that threat won't happen.
Thank you.
I was personally pleased to see the tailgating stopping at 7:00 P.M. when kickoff at the ballgame starts. I think that's a real positive move. Thank you for taking care of that, Chief Scott.
Terry, I just want to say, I appreciate the department, and I know I may bias because I used to work there, but our department does a great job of handling anything that comes along. Y'all do a really good job, very professional officers, and I do appreciate y'all.
Thanks.
Councilman Fournette?
Just that everything is going in a great direction. I'm just happy, and like Carlos said, let's keep praying for everything possible.
Absolutely. Councilwoman Young?
Yes, I had a couple of questions, but now, since we're talking about events, we'll talk a little bit about the Pascua River paddle battle, but that was also held this weekend, and we have a lot of support from police and fire as well. We have people, we attract people to Pascagoula from about five states. We have Florida, Georgia, Alabama, Mississippi, and Louisiana all represented, and sometimes we get somebody from Delaware or somewhere else around the, the country, and everybody, it's one of their favorite races because our, the support on the water is just amazing. The Fire Department comes out, they put, you know, and the Fire, Police Department comes out, and we have Coast Guard Auxiliary and the Sheriff's Department, and the people feel very safe on the water, even though they don't necessarily, you know, might be the first time on the Pascagoula River, but it's a very well-supported with law enforcement on the water, and it's, it's a great event. It starts at Little River Marina and it ends at the La Pointe Creves House. And so, people were staying at the Hilton and all that kind of stuff, so.
Councilman Parker?
Do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. I have a question for Justin. I know we approved tonight a storage for some items here at City Hall and in the move, so can you explain to us where we are in the process of bidding and moving and where we're going to have meetings going forward, just for the, I know you've explained it to me, but just for the public's sake?
So the, the storage will be for items in City Hall that we've got a vault full of minute books and things that we have to have a place for. So the storage will be for that, and it's temporary because we will also, within the next year, be building a storage facility. This is something that we've had money to do for a while. We're going to move forward with it to replace some trailers that we've had at 14th Street that are just, need to go. And so, so we'll have, we'll have items in storage. We're actually starting to move that stuff Monday. And then, the City Hall move, we'll be relocating this City Hall in December across the street to, next to Johnson's, the old Plaza West building that Jason Poole owns, and so we're moving to that building. City Hall will be on the top floor of that building with the utilities following, and they'll be on the bottom half, bottom right of that building when utilities moves in there as well. We have, when we move out of here to council meetings, will be held at the Pascagoula Senior Center. We'll have those meetings there twice a month until we're able to come back in here. As far as the plans for City Hall goes, we're still working on those. We actually have a meeting with our architect tomorrow morning to finalize. Everything's pretty finalized, but just to kind of make sure there's no last-minute tweaks of what we need to do here, but MDAH last week signed off on our, our plans. And so, it will be a one-story building. There won't be a second-story addition. They wouldn't let us do that, and so we're just going to go off the back some and, and then make better use of the space that we already have here. And so, that will bring utilities into this building as well. There'll be a kiosk on the back of the building for payments, so people will be able to pay their bills any hour, 24 hours a day, they can come do that. And then, yeah, that should start, we, we are going to go out for bid on that soon, and when we do bring that here for you to award the bid, we'll have Hoppy come tell the whole, give the whole plans and everything and tell about the project. And so, we've seen some renderings. It's really pretty. They've done a really good job, and so, yeah, we're real excited about what's to come here. So.
Excited to see it.
Yep. So, yeah.
Okay.
Fraction of the cost with the other?
Oh, well under, well, probably half the budget that we had, that, I mean, half the, yeah, probably about half the budget there that we were going to have to have at the other place. So we're excited about staying here, too, so.
And where are we on the revised paving list?
I gave it to James today.
Okay.
And he's looking over it to make sure there's no, the vetting, but just to see there's no projects that are going to interfere.
So maybe we'll, we'll see it next meeting.
More than likely, yeah. That's, that's what we're shooting for, so.
And maybe we need to reiterate that the city does not do paving.
Yeah, this is a list to provide to council, to supervisor Taylor for his paving.
The, Jackson County does all the paving.
Yeah.
And all the municipalities.
Yeah.
Paving and striping.
Yeah.
So all the striping is done by the county supervisors on their own timetable and with the budget that they have from taxes that they collect for roads and bridges. So they allocate a certain amount of those taxes to each of the municipalities, and they have their own contractor and do, do a nice job. We're happy to have them coming in and paving these.
Yeah.
Roads for us, but it's not us.
Yeah, we wait, wait, council, the supervisor Morris reached out today and said that the striping company will be in Moss Point this week, and they're expecting them to be here next week for some of the striping that wasn't completed on the last round of paving to come finish that off. And then, they're still working with Warren Paving to get an idea of when that last list will be completed as well, and so, but we're going to go ahead and get them, get to council the list to approve, to get to supervisor Taylor, so we're ready to go when those are done.
Thank you, Mr. Larson.
I also want to say something on that. A lot, a lot of citizens don't know that the contractor that used to do the paving for the county, something happened. They had to go out for bid to find another company, which put Pascagoula probably two years behind on paving.
With no paving for a couple of years.
With no paving whatsoever, and it wasn't our fault, it was just that they had to find another company, and it put everything behind them.
Well, and I'll just make one other comment. I just want the public to be aware and to know, and I think Cameron will appreciate this, that, that we have driven all the roads in town, and we have identified many roads that need striped, and, and as Justin mentioned, they're being prioritized right now, and so that will, as he said, hopefully we'll have a final list next week, and we'll begin to work through that list, and we'll have that list, you know, for the next couple of years. We'll revisit it each year, but it is a huge priority for the city. We know there are some roads that, that likely need some extra work, but we appreciate, you know, citizens who also let us know, you know, if their road, or if there's a road they drive on every day that, that needs some assistance, please let us know, and we'll double-check to see if it's on our list.
And also, with Mr. Borance here, the lighting on Old Mobile right towards Industrial, we've been working on it, too, to get adequate lighting in those areas along with the striping that helps also.
Justin, on these sports places, the striping included in that?
Should be, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yes, the parking that we, they paved, yeah, that's part of it.
All right.
Yeah. And, and just, one last thing, just to add on what Amy was saying about riding around, too, we're not only just looking at what roads need to be paved, but we also look at, and Public Works can assure you that this is something we look at, too, what street signs need to be replaced or cleaned. We've found a way to clean them without having to replace them, but if they're so faded you can't read them, we send that, that up. You know, any code issues we see, any Public Works issues as far as potholes go, so we look at all of that when we're doing these ride-arounds so we can make sure. But like Amy said, anytime you have something that comes up or that you see, it helps us out a whole lot to get your input as well, so, so appreciate that.
It's great, Justin.
Councilman Parker?
Well, I had one more thing. So speaking of striping, I had somebody ask me about when Magnolia was striped, to add all the additional parking, parallel parking spaces.
Okay.
Along Magnolia. When you get to the county service complex, when you exit the, well, the egress, ingress egress spaces on Magnolia Street, when you go to pull out, there, there's still two parking spaces.
It shouldn't be here.
Excuse me, on each side of the driveway, and people park there, and you can't see getting out. So if we could get those hatched, then maybe people wouldn't park there, and it would be a safer way to exit that parking lot.
We corrected a couple of those doors that are there already, so it's something we can.
Yeah, it's just, we just need to check all those egress points, try to see if we can get those hatched.
Yep, easy.
Anything else?
No.
Councilman Bligh?
Yeah, I'd like to give a, I guess it'd be appreciation to Public Works. Friday before last, I got a call of a backup in the blind butcher, went up there, could not get it unstopped, had to call the city. They came out there, found where the line went and what happened. There was not a cleanout for that building when the sewer line was installed in the 40s or 30s or 50s or whenever it happened. They came out that evening, came out early that morning, dug it up, installed the cleanout, came back, concreted, put the bricks back down. So they looked, they worked really, really hard to have everything ready for the event with the barbecue cook-off, and I just want to tell them I appreciate it because they really worked hard.
Very good, Mr. Bligh. There you go. I'd like to give a shout-out to all the cruising folks. We had a wonderful year cruising the coast, record crowds here. I'm there three days out of the three, and everyone we talked to, whether they were from Mississippi or Iowa or California or Texas, said, "This is the best place, the best venue of all the cruising stops, and we are coming here every year. We love Pascagoula." And that is a real good thing for our city to continue to support and to do so well, and it would not be possible without the hundreds of volunteers that are on their feet early morning, working late nights to make it happen here in Pascagoula. So tell, give a big thanks to any cruising folks you know because it's been a wonderful success. Amtrak is exceeding their passenger total goals, which is wonderful, somewhat unexpected. They're adding cars to all of the trips to New Orleans for the weekends of the Saints game. My office is next to the depot, and, and looking down yesterday, the other day, I saw a family of five carrying suitcases getting on the train to go west, and I thought, isn't that cool? Isn't that just the greatest thing in the world for us to have Amtrak stopping in Pascagoula?
It is.
Really, really neat things. And the last point is, I'm awfully proud of our sitting, city attorney. And the last point is, I'm awfully proud of our sitting city attorney substitute tonight, Ms. Jessica McNeil. If y'all don't know Ms. McNeil, she is a wonderful legal talent, and we're happy to have you joining us here tonight. Thank you, Jessica. Next, we have executive session. Do we have a motion to go into closed session to determine if there's a need for executive session?
Slow mo.
Second.
Motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That concludes the public portion of our agenda this evening.